The recording will be posted on the district website. To help manage bandwidth and to ensure a smooth experience, we ask that attendees have their video cameras disabled unless they're offering a public comment. You will be invited to start your video during public comment. This is a new format for us. We thank you for joining us and ask for your patience as we try out this new tool in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of social distancing and other restrictions. Thank you all in advance for your patience. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance which Dr. McKibben has graciously offered to lead. Oh, Mike, you're unmuted. You're good.
Are you ready? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I am Paula Viasquez, Board President. Joining me tonight is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, and Ms. Pam Costa and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members, Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comments for tonight's meeting. You may send an email to boardcomment@sanjuan.edu. I'll repeat that one more time. Comments that were emailed before 6:00 PM today have already been shared with all board members. Comments emailed after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time the agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform here in Lifetime, where you may use the raise your hand feature. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 300 words for written comment. And with that, we are at Item B, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for March 10th?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We are at Item C, visitor comments. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time?
Certainly, President Viasquez. To our attendees, this portion of the meeting is for public comment on topics that do not appear on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to offer a comment about the criteria used to be to be used in drawing boundaries for trustee area elections, we would ask that you hold your comment until the public hearing later in the meeting. If you'd like to make a comment on a topic that is not on the agenda, we would ask that you raise your hand at this time. To do so, please locate the Participants button located at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Clicking or tapping that button will display the participant list typically on the right side of your screen or in a separate window. At the bottom of the participants list, you will see the Raise Hand button. Click that button and that will indicate to us that you would like to give a public comment and we will call on you for a two-minute public comment window. We will pause now for a few moments to see if anybody would like to raise their hand and offer a public comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda.
Okay, I'll give folks a second to indicate and raise their hand. Mr. Allen, do we have any general visitor comments?
The other comments we've received via email are all for the business item tonight.
Okay. With that, we will move to Item D, our consent calendar. Do we have any public comments for items on consent?
And again, if you'd like to make a public comment regarding a consent item, if you would raise your hand, located at the bottom of the participant screen is the Raise Hand button.
Okay, seeing none. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve items D1 through D10?
Same.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Hernandez and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We are now at Item F, Business Item. F1, California Voting Rights Act Public Hearing Regarding the Potential Composition of Bi Trustee Areas. First, there will be a presentation and then we will move into the public hearing. If you would like to offer a comment during the public hearing, please raise your hand at any time during this agenda item and you will be called. Ms. Simlich, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, President Velazquez, Board Members and Superintendent Kern. I'd like to introduce Larry Furchar, Demographer with Cooperative Strategies. Mr. Furchar, along with Attorney Michelle Cannon from Lozano Smith, will present the trustee area process before, as you stated, the board holds the California Voting Rights Act Public Hearing Number One. Mr. Furchar.
Well, thank you, Ms. Simlich and members of the board, Superintendent Kern. Again, my name is Larry Furchar with Cooperative Strategies and I'm going to load the presentation as soon as my technological abilities allow for it. Let's see if I get this right today. Did I get it right today?
You're good.
All right. Well, thank you again. Our firm has done work for about 50 public agencies across the state as they've moved from at-large elections to bi-area elections, including some recent districts in, you know, the Northern California area, including Davis Joint Unified, Nevada Unified, Santa Rosa City Schools and Mount Diablo Unified down in the East Bay. So just a little bit of history on us. We also provide other financial and demographic services to school districts throughout the state and the country. Let's see if I can make this go forward here. There we go. So tonight's public hearing is to provide input from the public on how trustee areas should be drawn as the district makes its transition from at-large to bi-area elections. Under the education code, there are three methods of election for school boards. There's the current at-large method of election that the school district uses where anyone in this district can vote for any of the members of the board to be elected. There's the from-area method of election, which divides a district up into different areas and then a trustee is elected from each area but is elected still at large by the entire district. And finally, there's the bi-trustee area method of election and this is the only method of election that is in the safe harbor from challenge under the California Voting Rights Act. And that involves dividing the district up into equal areas in terms of population, having one board member elected from each area and only by the members of the area that are electing that board member. So similar to how we elect members of Congress or members of the state legislature, there's one representative per area and they're elected only by the members of the community that also live in that area. What this doesn't do is change how the board functions. This is how the board members are elected. It's still one board where a majority is needed to make changes or enact any policies and it doesn't change anything related to that fiduciary responsibility of school board members to the whole district either. So we've talked a little bit about the California Voting Rights Act. I imagine at previous board meetings, and what is that? It's a law that took effect back in 2003 that prohibits the use of at-large elections when such an election system can be shown that it's impairing the ability of members of protected classes to influence the outcome of elections. Protected classes are defined under the Federal Voting Rights Act as members of race, color, or language minority groups. And again, that's under the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965. The district received a demand letter requesting that the district make a transition from at-large to bi-area elections, suggesting there could be a potential violation of the California Voting Rights Act and the district has made the decision back on March 10th to adopt a resolution initiating the transition to a bi-area method of election in time for the 2020 election. With this process comes a timeline that's outlined in statute in terms of two pre-map public hearings and those are currently scheduled for tonight and April 14th. And then once maps are drawn, there are a schedule of three public hearings on the maps for the community and the board to review, provide feedback on, make changes to, and whittle down until the board ultimately selects a map. The current timeline, and I'll put an asterisk next to current, is again listed here to hold the second pre-map hearing on April 14th and then hold the first map public hearing on April 28th, a second map public hearing on the 12th of May and the third and final on May 26th. We'll say that that has got an asterisk next to it because this is subject to change based on the requirements imposed as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the rules related to meetings and social distancing that the state is under. So you'll see also on here is the May 6th through 7th State Board of Education meeting. That's where the district's waiver application is scheduled to be considered by the state board and that waiver is the waiver of the requirement that there be an election held as to whether or not the district can make the transition from at-large to bi-area. That is something that 99% of districts have sought the waiver for that transition process and have received. So it's a very routine matter. But if this timeline is what is adhered to, then this would all be completed in time for the November 2020 election. I'll turn this over to Michelle now to talk about the Governor's Executive Order N3420.
Thank you. Oh, good, I unmuted myself. Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Kern. I just wanted to briefly jump in on Mr. Furchar's presentation and talk to you a little bit about Executive Order N-3420. This is one of Governor Newsom's executive orders. It was put in place March 20th and it suspends timelines for various things having to do with elections and specifically a part of it speaks to the CVRA. But what the executive order does, or at least appears to do, is it suspends the current statutory timelines for public hearings. So that would be, for instance, tonight's pre-map hearing as well as the next one and then the other public hearings that Mr. Furchar has just reviewed. And what it says is that the requirement or the deadlines for the public hearings will be suspended during the period of social distancing measures and then once those are lifted, the timelines would be lifted and reinstated. What unfortunately the executive order does not do is speak to whether it also extends or suspends or stays the safe harbor provision, which you will know from the last board meeting and the one before. We are operating under in order to make sure that we're following the law and we get this all done within the statutory timelines for that so that you're not subject to litigation. So we are proceeding under the statutory deadlines and timelines and that's why Mr. Furchar just walked you through the timeline that you saw, although there is an asterisk next to it. We've actually reached out with several other statewide organizations to the Governor's Office to see if we can get clarification on these deadlines and what exactly is suspended and whether that includes the safe harbor. At this time though, we believe that the best course of action is for you to proceed. You've already got your timeline in place. You've already got your process in place and we're going to do the best we can, of course, following the Governor's orders, social distancing, stay-at-home orders and everything else, but to make sure that we proceed with the law as well as invite and encourage and get as much public participation as possible. And we'll be working with you hand in hand to do that until and unless we get word otherwise from the Governor.
All right, well, thank you, Michelle. Continuing on then in the presentation, as we embark on this process, is understanding some of the considerations or criteria that go into drawing voting areas. We've laid out here what those criteria are. So first, each area has to contain roughly the equal number of inhabitants with a variance that we're allowed of up to 10% between the largest and smallest areas. The areas have to be drawn to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, meaning we can't do anything in this process that impairs members of protected classes from being able to influence the outcome of election. An example we like to give here is that if we had an area that was compact and contained a sufficient number of members of a protected class and instead of making that one area, we were to divide that up into three areas and therefore diminish their voting strength across those three areas, that would be in violation of the Federal Voting Rights Act. And we'll look at that a little bit more as we continue through this presentation. The areas are supposed to be contiguous, so you can't start on one side of the district, stop and then pick up on the other side. They have to be compact and cohesive as much as possible. We want to look at respecting communities of interest as much as possible and keeping them together, following man-made and other natural geographic features so we can have these areas be understandable to the public so they understand, you know, what voting area they're in. Incumbency is an allowable consideration, but it can't be a primary consideration. And then other local considerations that the board or their community might provide feedback on, such as school attendance boundaries or location of school sites. That's all something that can be included. At the next board meeting, we'll have agendized a resolution for the board to formally adopt these criteria. So if there's criteria that we'd like to have on the local end in terms of school sites or school boundaries, that would be good to include within that resolution and that would be good to have during the discussion part of this agenda. So turning now to the map and we're on Slide 6 here. As you can see from over my shoulder are like maps, but we have a map of the school district and the various communities that are served on the left-hand side of the screen. On the right-hand side, you can see the 2010 census data and we are required to use 2010 census as the most recent count of actual folks within the boundaries of the school district. Tomorrow is the official day of the 2020 census, but it will be about a year before that data is released. And so, once that data is released in 2021, we'll look at whatever map the district adopted for the 2020 election and make any adjustments that may be necessary to ensure that the population is in balance still. But these are the numbers that we have to use to start the process in order to have these mapped out for the 2020 election. So you can see here, 321,703 folks lived in the district's boundaries. This is total population, age one day to 120 years old, regardless of whether somebody is eligible to vote or not. That would translate into five roughly equal areas of 64,340 people. You can see on total population, 71.69% white, 14.29% Hispanic Latino, 4.58% Asian and 4.55% Black or African-American. That's on total population. On the next column over, we also look at 18 and over. So if everybody who was old enough to vote could vote, that would be the numbers we're looking at there. And then on the next slide, we look at something called Citizen Voting Age Population or CBAP. This is a more updated number. This is based on the Census Bureau's American Community Survey, which every year samples a very small percentage of households across the United States and aggregates that into five-year rolling averages. And one of the things that they look at is people who are 18 and over and are citizens of the United States and therefore would be our eligible to register to vote population. So you can see that number just under 250,000 based on the 2014 to 2018 sample, which is the most recent available as of right now. And that population is 70, just under 74% white, 12 and a half percent Latino, 5.2% African-American or Black and 4.78% Asian and 3.22% identifying as two or more races. On the map on the right-hand side, since the Latino Citizen Voting Age Population is the largest of the protected classes within the school district, we look to see is it possible to find any areas of concentration of that protected class? So the color scheme there, the color ramp showing the darker colors representing a higher concentration of Latino Citizen Voting Age Population. You can see it's pretty spread out across the district. There's not really an area of high concentration. You'll notice there's a little bit of a red block just between Roseville Road and Auburn Boulevard there, right where the 80 is, or Interstate 80, I forget. Northern California freeways don't start with the where you're at. And so that area is large in size and that census block is dark in color. But usually the larger the census block, such as that one is, the fewer the number of people in there. So it's a little bit of red herring there, if you will, to show that because it is not necessarily a lot of people. It's just, it could be five or so people, for example, producing a highly concentrated area. So generally, what we see on this map is not, you know, and given the size and distribution of the population, it doesn't appear that it'd be likely that we can create an area where members of a protected class would represent a majority of a particular voting area. We may see areas of increased influence as we go through this process. But again, based on what we're seeing right now, it doesn't appear that it would be possible to create what is known as a majority-minority area through this process. With that, then we can kind of transition to the purpose of tonight's public hearing, which is, you know, how should these lines be drawn? And that's the question being posed to the board and to the public through this public hearing. And we're starting with a blank slate. And so that's what this map here is indicating. It's the outlines of the school district and an aerial image of what's below. And as we hear public feedback and get input from the community, some of the examples that are helpful is, you know, I would like to keep a particular neighborhood and another particular neighborhood in the same trustee area with some explanation as to why that makes sense. You know, it makes sense because those are similar communities. They have similar interests. They should be together through this process. You know, I think X Avenue or Y Avenue would make sense as a boundary because again, they keep communities together. They provide good representation. Conversely, what we've also seen is there are some streets that, to an outsider's perspective, look like a major road that would be a good dividing line for a community. But in reality, actually, don't divide a community but are the heart of a community. And so there may be a street that, for outsider's perspective, looks like a dividing line but to those who reside in the community, they know that that's really, you know, the kind of the central core of that particular community. So if there's streets like that, that makes sense. That, you know, would be to tell us those aren't really dividing lines. Those are core of a community and they really should be kept together. That's helpful to hear as well. You know, other things, all of a particular community should be in one area. Each middle elementary or high school boundary should be in multiple or single areas. Each trustee should service, you know, multiple school sites. You know, when it comes to this transition process for school districts, you know, a lot of districts have told me that as they go through this process, they'd like to maintain the at-large feel in terms of making sure each board member, you know, feels responsive and responsible to each school in the district. And so to avoid having silos, if you will, of, you know, one elementary school or one high school boundary is completely within one trustee area. And they like to have kind of a cross-section as much as possible. So if there's multiple trustees who are serving multiple boundaries and multiple boundaries that are in communication with multiple trustees. So that's some feedback as well. And again, some input that would be helpful from the community and the board on that subject. Finally, at the end of the day, what does this look like? And this is a sample of what a district, it's a little bit south and west along Interstate 80 and Davis Joint Unified School District. This is what their map ended up looking like after they got through this process, a little bit smaller of a community. But you can see five areas, some very large in geography, some very small in geography based on just population density. But you can see how the school sites are divided, where the board members happen to reside and just generally what it looks like. Obviously, the much larger district here in San Juan, it's going to be a little bit different of a map. But just wanted to give you kind of a sample of what, you know, what this process will look like when we get to the end of the road. So in terms of next steps, tonight's, conduct the public hearing, receive feedback from the board and the community. There'll be that second pre-map public hearing scheduled for the April 14th board meeting. So if folks on either the board or from the community want to take some time and think over their feedback prior to that, that's a good time to take this two weeks and provide that at the next meeting. And we'll also be in the process of drafting a resolution outlining the criteria and considerations for the board to consider adopting at the next board meeting. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions from the board before opening it up for the public hearing.
So I think we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing and then at the end, take board member questions if that's okay.
Sure. And I'll just stop sharing the presentation now.
Yeah, okay. And if, actually, that is helpful because now I can see my colleagues. I will give one more opportunity for any questions now, but otherwise we'll move into the hearing. Seeing none? Okay. We will now move into the public hearing. I declare the California Voting Rights Act Public Hearing Number One Regarding the Potential Composition of Bi Trustee Areas Open for Public Comment. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments?
We do have one participant who has raised their hand and then we have five emails on this topic. So we will start with our raised hand, which is Mr. Scott Rafferty. Mr. Rafferty, your microphone has been unmuted and I'm going to invite you to start sharing your video. Then it's optional and up to you, but your microphone should be unmuted and you have two minutes, sir.
Thank you. I know this is a very difficult time for all of us and we have to respect each other's burdens. However, I want to get right to the point. I don't think it's unfortunate or unclear that the governor has not suspended the safe harbor. That would effectively repeal or suspend the entire California Voting Rights Act. And I'm kind of disappointed to hear that people are urging him to do that. I think this district needs to commit, not only because it's the law, but because it's more necessary than ever. You're going to be calling on the entire community to make very big sacrifices next year and for the foreseeable future. The board, as a matter of effectiveness, needs to be representative. That doesn't mean creating cross-sections. It means giving a voice to disempowered communities. If you look at the hard-to-count metrics that the state has created, it makes very clear that there's an area west of Watt Avenue that needs to have a dedicated voice on the board. In order to represent other areas, we also believe you need to move to seven trustees, like practically every other unified school district of your size. So I hope we move forward. I think it's time to eliminate any uncertainty about that. And I think also you should be reaching out across the digital divide, distribute information with free lunches, to provide reply cards. Because as Mr. Furchar will explain and I have seen in multiple cases, Latinos, even those parents who are not fluent in English, they have a lot to contribute. And they can contribute and you can make that happen despite the exigencies of our current situation.
Mr. Rafferty, that is two minutes. So if you could wrap up your comments, sir.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. And that is our only hand raised. So we do have one, two, three, four, five emailed comments at this point. And I will begin with Tammy Dreamer, who has sent an email to the board. "On behalf of Organized Sacramento, I'm writing in support of business agenda item number one, bi-district elections for San Juan Unified School District. Organized Sacramento provides training, education, technical and personal assistance in the form of individual and group classes, presentations, research assistance and coaching in order to educate community groups, individuals, organizations, small business owners and others on techniques of community organizing, local government processes and community and business resources. The purpose is to equip citizens to think and act strategically to produce positive results when community issues like voting access become organizing campaigns. The Federal Voting Rights Act was adopted in 1965 and is intended to protect the rights of all citizens to participate in the voting process. The CVRA was passed in the California State Legislature in 2001 based on the legislature's belief that minorities and other members of protected classes were being denied the opportunity to have representation of their choosing at the local level because of a number of issues associated with at-large elections. We believe that by moving to bi-district elections, our marginalized communities will achieve better representation and in turn voter participation in elections will amplify. It will also make it easier for members of the community without huge campaign resources to run and be elected to serve their neighbors and their families on the school board. Other districts have voluntarily or been forced to adopt changes to their method of electing board trustees. While some districts have settled claims out of court by agreeing to shift the district elections, others have defended at-large elections through the court system and have incurred significant legal costs because the CVRA gives plaintiffs the right to recover attorney fees. We don't want that to happen in San Juan. Organized Sacramento urges you to support, urges your support of item number one, adoption of bi-district elections. Please include our comment in the public record." Our next comment is from Amy Kasuni. "Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the Board." Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Mrs. Cunningham. Tonight, I'd like to thank you for moving forward with by district elections in San Juan Unified. Thank you for offering San Juan Unified the best of both worlds. In that, by district representation allows for district-wide oversight by all board members while simultaneously giving each board member the opportunity to nurture existing relationships and in doing so, develop deeper connections at each school site. In addition, it affords members greater freedom to review the complex data and cultural and culture emanating from each representative site. A seven trustee district better ensures these deeper connections and freedoms. Having served as your district's first LCAP chair, we all recognize the unique successes and needs of each school district, of each distinct school site. I'm filled with happiness that you've taken this bold action for all students, teachers, and staff. Again, with gratitude, Amy Kasuni. Our next comment is from Mrs. McGauley Kincaid. Good evening. My name is McGauley Kincaid, and I'm a parent in the San Juan Unified School District. I'm here to encourage the board and the demographer to prioritize prioritize transparency and community engagement, not tokenization, when drawing the maps for our district. I understand community engagement may be challenging during the COVID-19 times. San Juan has created several access points, both virtually and in person, to invite feedback and transparency, including virtual classrooms, food distribution centers, and laptop pickup programs. I encourage more conversations and innovation during these difficult times to explore how best to engage diverse families. I also want to press on the importance of prioritizing the voices of those frequently left out of decision-making as those are also the most impacted communities. Representation of and for our most struggling students and schools must be at the forefront of any mapmaking decisions and encourage the use of key metrics, including refugee status, ELL status, foster status, income, and race ethnicity in making those decisions. I look forward to working with you all to ensure this map is representative of our most disenfranchised communities. Thank you. Our next comment is from Mr. Maris Canton. I would like to speak in support of going to a trustee area board. The lack of diversity on the SJUSD board in leadership and in classrooms in this district has, does, and will continue to hurt students of color and poverty. Without diversity, you don't have the personal experiences or backgrounds to draw on as you make life decisions for the students of SJUSD. Giving the district five to seven people from all walks of life is much more representative of the district you serve. Sometimes you don't know what you don't know, and over the last 22 years, it has become very clear that the board doesn't know what it doesn't know, and its inability to ask or accept information and or help from those of us who are much closer to having answers about our communities is an indicator that it is time to make a change. It is my hope that you will, you, it is my hope that you will use your individual passions and expertise to help us come up with the best solutions to change the terrible academic outcomes for students of color and poverty. They deserve the same quality education as every other student in the district. Our next comment is from Patricia Johnson.
Hey, Trent.
Yes.
Can you just indicate before the last one so that I can invite anyone else to raise their hand, unless you were planning to do that? But I just want to give folks one more opportunity to raise a hand before we.
Absolutely. I have this one and then one more after this one.
Great, thanks.
So this is again from Patricia Johnson. I am in strong support of the by district elections to the SJUSD board. I think it is also important to increase the size of the board from the current five-member board to seven members. I'm a proud parent of two sons that attended great schools in San Juan. They both went on to earn advanced degrees. I think it is unfair that the same school district has schools of such different quality. It is unfair that some schools have low academic achievement and limited educational opportunities. All children deserve to have the same quality, same high quality and wonderful academic education as my sons received. It is achieved by having each district represented on the board. It will be even more representative with seven district board members. The needs of all students will receive attention, and the result will be a terrific learning environment for all children. And our last submitted email is from Camille Broserd Wise. Dear board members, as a parent and educator, I urge you to create districts that consider the ethnic, socioeconomic status, and other demographic data that will ensure these maps are drawn equitably. It is important that there is no segregation in these districts by race or income, which can further exacerbate the already growing achievement gap. We all suffer if our children, all of our children, do not get a quality education. And that is our final email that has been submitted at this point. And again, if you would like to offer a public comment, and you are on the Zoom call with us, and you would like to raise your hand, you may do so at this time and offer a public comment.
I will pause for just one moment to see if anyone indicates.
And just in case you have joined us since we last gave instructions on how to raise your hand, at the bottom of your screen, the main window, there's a participant button. If you click that button, you will see the list of participants pop up, typically on the right-hand side of your screen, sometimes in a new little window that will pop up. And at the bottom of that participant list is a raise hand button. If you tap that raise hand button, that will let us know you would like to offer a comment. And we do have Mr. Juan Niegas, who would like to offer a comment. So your microphone. Yes, sir. You are unmuted, sir. Would you like to start your camera?
Thank you. No need. I don't think you all need to see me, but if you'd like to, fine. I disconnected myself, so I missed the comments. I'm not clear if you read mine. If you didn't, I'd like to read mine. I submitted it after six.
Let me see. We do not have one from you, sir, after six, so I would encourage you to go ahead and read it.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to during these trying times, I wanted to thank you for providing, that is to the board and staff, for providing Chromebooks for students in need. Very much appreciated. I'm also pleased that you're choosing to move forward with implementation of the by area elections. I'd like to make two comments. I again encourage you to seriously consider the option of creating seven districts. San Juan is a large district. As I've shared with you before, of the nine districts larger than San Juan, only two, San Diego and Long Beach, have five elected trustees. The other seven districts have seven trustees. Of the five districts right below San Juan in enrollment, three have seven members. I believe that if a district is created west of Watt Avenue, and an additional district is created somewhat east of Watt, the west side would receive much needed representation. Further, current members would not be displaced in the next two election cycles. Second, as you develop the voting districts, I urge you to consider variables that indicate exceptional need and disparliament. Such variables include, but are not limited to poverty level, pre-capital income, lack of internet access, low number of high school graduates, limited English speakers, high rental population, high levels of crime, as well as indicators of privilege and influence, such as access to parks, high income, high college, and professional school attainment, high ownership, high housing values, and high voter participation. Thank you for allowing public access to today's meeting. Happy Caesar's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Niegas. At this point, I do not see anybody else wishing to to raise their hand or indicating a desire to offer comments. So we are going to move to board member.
President Viasquez, we do have one more email that just popped in. And it is from Aaron Miner. As a resident of Citrus Heights, living in the SJUSD, I implore you to fully consider the representation for underserved and poor communities, especially those of color, in drawing your new district lines. Care must be taken to ensure that lower-income residents represent a coherent block on the board and do not have the residents divided amongst multiple more affluent sectors boasting well-to-do majorities with little empathy for the plight of those less fortunate. And that is our final comment.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I still have not in the time period seen anyone else looking to raise their hand in the Zoom meeting. So we will now move to board member questions and comments. Just for, to make it a little bit easier, we'll go in kind of our typical DIAS order. And so I'm going to start with Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the comments and I appreciate the presentation by Mr. Fairchild. I specifically would like the one point bullet, if you will. I don't know what number page it was, but it talked about the high schools and middle schools being represented pretty much evenly, you know, by a member of the board living in that area. In essence, you know, in our, in our high school, we, in our district, we have nine comprehensive high schools with other high schools and other circumstances. And and I would hope as we move forward, however that is, and we'll let the professionals do their job, that we, you know, we take them to found that I would, I would hope that as we do these districts, that a board member, wherever that district may be, that they will have a probably a high school in their area and divided up evenly in our high schools, that that probably could be seen, I mean, done. And it's likely that, you know, we do that, that a board member may have one or two, maybe even three, depending on how those districts are. But at least one comprehensive high school, I think, should be a considerable factor. And that's my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I actually forgot a technical piece, which is at the termination of the public comments to the public hearing that was just held. I need to close the hearing. So there having been no further comments from visitors, I declare the public hearing closed, and I am striking the gavel with my mouse, which I think is just as official. With that, we will continue with board member questions and comments. Ms. Costa.
Thank you so much. I concur with Mr. Hernandez that we hopefully can divide the trustee areas so that there are high schools in each of the trustee areas. I seem to have more time on my hands lately, and so I did a lot of research online of what other districts looked at in terms of factors when they looked at trustee areas beyond the ones that are required by law. And I wanted to ask Larry, I didn't find a lot of other factors that boards used. Have you encountered other factors other than the ones that are required by law?
Typically, the one with school districts that's most common has to do with division of schools and school attendance boundaries. So sometimes we'll be told, you know, we want each high school attendance boundary to have at least two trustee areas overlaying it, or something like that, as an example. You know, sometimes you'll hear that, you know, that there's certain roads that make sense, but in terms of overarching criteria, no, not really.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Creason.
Thanks. The presentation was helpful. Just a couple of comments. I agree with what my colleague said about doing our best equally break up the schools so that there is equal representation in the number of schools whenever possible is important. And in regard to public process, it seems to me Zoom's looking pretty, has been working pretty good for receiving public comment for our first go. So that gives me hope because, of course, as you've heard me say before, I am concerned with the rush process and getting meaningful input from the community as we move forward. But this this meeting gives me hope that that will be one tool we can use. And I know in talking to Superintendent Kern, I know he's working with staff to come up with some out-of-the-box ideas on how we can engage folks quickly in this land of social distancing. I thought the idea of using lunch pickup, maybe including a flyer in the bags, is maybe a really good idea, just another, another way to get the word out. So I appreciated that comment quite a bit. So I look forward to moving the process forward. And I know that there's a lot of folks that are interested in the topic, and I think especially as we're getting to the meetings very specific on maps, you know, that's where I hope big folks can really do a lot of work in advocacy. That's where we're going to need to make sure that we get as many voices at the table as we can. And again, we're going to need to be outside of the box. So it might be helping folks on their new Chromebooks, you know, that we've sent home, getting connected to Zoom. You know, of course, at a safe distance and just kind of reaching out to our friends and family and, you know, just our school community, our district community, to help folks plug into the process.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Next step, Dr. McKibben.
Yes, my questions relate mostly to slide number five, related to the considerations of trustee areas. Mr. Faircall, for example, when talking about the fourth
Hey, Mike.
Yes.
Just a little bit away from the computer so that we can hear you. You get a little bit muffled when you get too close.
Okay, so moving away.
Good there, but when you were looking at your notes, it just got a little bit.
Okay, I'll bring my notes to me then. How's that? That the fourth check was respect communities of interest. Can you define a little bit in more detail what you mean by communities of interest?
Sure. It's a term that's used that doesn't have a formal definition, but it's kind of defined by each community, what makes their community of interest. You know, it's, you know, what makes a community, what makes the area feel like they have things in common? I've heard examples, you know, people who go to the same grocery store, who go to the same places of worship in their area. That can define a community of interest. When you look at the district's boundaries, you see a lot of census designated place or neighborhoods or things that are, you know, those could be considered communities and trying to keep those together. So, you know, how do we define neighborhoods and communities? And I think that's information that comes from the the members of the community to say, hey, you know, this area between this street and this street and this street and this street, that's a, that's a community. We feel like we're part of one group.
Okay. Say, going on to the the right-hand column, the top one, when talking about topography, you mentioned streets, but are there and other man-made topography and dash old geographic features? Are there any of natural geographic features that you know of that we might possibly use in our determinations and and other man-made features that that ought to we ought to note?
Sure. So, I mean, looking, you know, district typically, you know, you might have a water, we know, the river might cut through a middle of a district, and that would be a good dividing line, not seeing that that would make a lot of sense here, given the the small part of the district that is that is south of of the river. You may see canyons or ravines or mountains that make for good dividing lines. But again, not seeing a whole lot of that that here in terms of.
Those don't seem to be in our area. Okay.
In terms of the natural geographic features. So, you know, railroad tracks are can be something that people will often talk about, major roads, those sorts of dividing lines, you know, parkies, parkways and other, you know, dividing lines, utility easements, those things can sometimes be dividing lines.
Okay. One other on the the topography and so forth. In your other experiences, have you talked about using streets and so forth? When using streets, is it common that one, that, for example, one side of a street might go to be in one trustee district and the other side might be another? And how how has that affected some of the other considerations, like those common interests you were talking about, about going to the same grocery stores and those kinds of things?
So the luxury we have in a district with the size population that you have here is we won't likely have to go into a neighborhood in order to divide that. And so we'd like to avoid using streets as dividing line where people who generally would be across the street from each other and see each other, just like you would in school attendance boundaries, aren't divided down the middle of the street. That's why when you stick to major roadways, you can avoid that a little bit more and recognizing, well, there's not like people who live on those streets. It's mostly businesses, for example. So, you know, generally, we try to avoid going into areas where, you know, the person that you see when you get the paper in the morning, you wave it to them across the street, you're not in separate voting areas.
And and my final question relates to on you talked about the districts. If we use five districts, the the numbers would be slightly less than 64,000. And it says plus or ten, plus or minus 10%. Is that like, would be approximately 3,000 on the each, on each side of 64,000 would be permissible?
Or any combination thereof between the largest and smallest area. So there can be up to 6,400 person difference between the largest and smallest area.
Okay, so it so it could be 2,000 on one side and 4,000 on the other. Okay, so it, so it could be 2,000 on one side and 4,000 on the other.
Correct.
Or something like that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Your presentation was very helpful. I too agree that we, we should serve multiple schools, but, and, but I do also agree that it would be a nice touchstone to have approximately two high schools in each of the districts if, if we stay with, with five trustee representatives. And, and certainly the other schools that are important, like La Vista and, and Maraca and that sort of thing ought to be interspersed in those districts too. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. I had a couple of questions as well, and I think in general, as I kind of contemplate some of the lines, I think what I struggle with is something that we're just all going to struggle with, which is building lines to support communities as they are now based on 2010 data, because I think we all know that our district has changed quite a bit in the last 10 years. So I don't, do you have any suggestions on how to do that? Like, should we just go straight off of the 2010 data, because we're going to have to do this again anyway? Or is there more helpful data, maybe off of the ACS data, that could help kind of guide that, that's a little bit more up to date? And I think in general, I'm curious about the other variables, if any, available in that ACS data, because it's my understanding that that's collected on a more frequent basis than every 10 years.
So one of the limitations with the ACS data is that it's done, and this is, gets real technical, it's done at the, the block group level or the census tract level. And when we do these voting areas, and you'll hear me use this analogy a lot, we're using the census block level, which is kind of like the Lego bricks that we're using to build these trustee areas. It's the smallest unit of geography for which we have population information. And we need to go down to that block level in order to just work with the variance as much as possible. Sometimes if we were at the tract or the block group level, we wouldn't be able to get within that variance. So just to go back on that, so when we do that, if we, we can inform our decisions a little bit with some of that ACS data, but it's a little bit of an estimate, because sometimes those block groups or those tracts will cross two trustee areas when we are at the census block level. There is third-party data that can be purchased at the block level, and we've done this in a couple districts where we've looked at more updated third-party data, which is usually done by market research firms who are selling this to advertisers and people doing direct mail. But it's helpful because you could see an updated estimate of the population, and you can try to, try to balance both populations, the 2010 population, which is what you have to balance, while at the same time trying to balance, you know, what the 2019 or 2020 population may have looked like based on those estimates. And sometimes you can get close so that you have both within that 10% range. Other times, you just may not be able to, and you have to just do your best on the 2010 while, you know, saluting what is happening currently, recognizing that the map may only be used for, for one election, and then have some substantial changes after the 2020 census.
Is there anything in the ACS data that points to, or other sets of data that we can use that offer kind of the variables of exceptional needs, which was one of the things brought up, which I think is a great way to kind of package these, I think, data points in terms of lack of access to transportation or, or other infrastructure or internet access and other kinds of things? I'd be interested in looking at those, knowing full well that that's a huge challenge. I mean, right now, like my, in my day job, my hat is trying to figure out, how do we reach people that we know we can't reach? And so obviously, if someone else had solved this problem, we would not be here today, because there would be an algorithm to sort this all out. But what other data points should we be trying to draw in that might be reasonably accessible, either from our neighbors, I'm thinking RQ Transit or something like that, that can help inform this?
The American Community Survey and the Census Bureau in general have a whole host of things, they ask people questions on that we can dive into. Some of the other data points that we've used in other districts would be average household income. We've used highest level of education for the adults in the household. We've used English language status. We've used percentage of renters versus homeowners within a particular area. We've used age bands to see if, you know, a particular area has more school-aged children and a particular area has fewer school-aged children, just to see those types of metrics as well. So those are among the, you know, certainly easier ones to obtain from the American Community Survey.
That's super helpful, and just knowing those variables, both as, as a reminder, but to kind of keep in mind, because one of the things that keeps coming to the forefront of my head, right, is the consideration that for at least the last four years, if not longer, we are home to one of Sacramento County's most income, biggest income disparity in terms of equality and income equality, and, and one of the biggest codes in the state too. So that's just something that I'm constantly trying to, to keep in mind as we go very quickly down this exploration of kind of looking at the very ground level, what our, what our community looks like now and what our data might show us that it looked like in 2010, and, and balancing that. I think the other point that come to mind in terms of being helpful, you mentioned school attendance boundaries. I think probably a map with overlaying those to the extent that we can be as, you know, not disrupt those areas and boundaries, or at least know them and keep them in mind as we move forward. I would find that, I think, helpful. And then, I'm not sure if we can, but I just would love to have a better sense of district-wide kind of our matriculation patterns, both like what they are now and to some extent what, and I think primarily of kind of the workshop that we had around kind of our West End schools, so both what they are now and what in an ideal world they might be, which I know is tougher to solve for, but those are just, I think, pieces of information that might be helpful to see at a bigger scale. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Or Kent, do you have any comments?
You know, my only point, Paula, was going to be on that last about the matriculation. I'll try and get more specifics on what you're thinking, and then that's some information that we could provide based on just patterns from elementary, middle, middle to high. We could, we could look to gather that information for you. So I'll, I'll make sure that I know exactly what you're looking for, and then when we provide that information, we'll make sure that information is provided to Larry, but also publicly as well when we, when we go out and ask for feedback and input.
Great, thank you. That was it for me, so I'll open it to my colleagues one more time. Any further comments or questions on this item?
This, raising my hand here. This is my, Mike McKibben, and the, I thought the, follow your note related to transportation and infrastructure challenges is one I hadn't thought about. I think that, that's a very interesting thought, and, and this might be a good time to look at that one. And also, I wanted to note that we haven't really talked about our refugee populations and so forth, and I think that's another consideration that we ought to have as, to make sure that their voice is heard also, and, and make sure that they're included in our consideration.
I think that's one of the things we've been exploring as well about how, when we go out to the community and we try and get input, what, what could we do? How could we do that? I think one of the things that would help, and I, I think Pam, you might have mentioned it, or one of the board members, about the distribution of the technology. We started on the West End, I think we've given out, gosh, probably between 3,000 and 4,000 devices now. We gave at Encina last week, I think it was over 1,100 devices one day alone, and that wasn't just to the high school students, it was to the community. So we're hoping that they have access that they previously didn't. We have asked folks as well if they, about what type of access they, they have just to the internet. That's another challenge in and of itself. With some of the, the umbrella coverage that some of the companies have done, which is outstanding, that's helped out a little bit. But that's something that we'll be attentive to, you know, the concentrations of our, our groups of, of community members and making sure we're doing what we can to reach out to all of them.
Well, and you raise an interesting point, because even kind of tracking our food distribution, I don't, and patterns over the last two weeks or so, I don't, this has been a crazy evolving situation, but we've already had to kind of adapt to meet the needs and figure out exactly where we need to focus our resources. And so to the extent that we can use a lot of that hard work that's happening and get some extra information and purpose out of all that work, I think, I think we should, if we can figure out how to, how to capitalize on that. I'm seeing no further questions or comments. That concludes our inaugural Zoom meeting. And we have no other items, so we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you all for attending. Our next meeting will be August 14th. We do plan to hold it on Zoom at 6:30 as well. April 14th, April 14th, not August, April 14th, thank you. Days are getting away from me. Thank you all for attending.